Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus, Mrs. Kell Smith, Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Four members present.
I saw-
Madam Clerk, apologies. Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers of the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before a city council profanity is not permitted. After you recall, please restate your name and provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Here. I honor my husband who is a true public servant for the city of Pittsburgh from the nineteen-seventies until two thousand and twenty-one. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people they serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. The city comptroller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the comptroller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. Michael Lamb should have attended our meeting to explain why the waste, fraud, and abuse continues. Waste of thousands of dollars per month is occurring with Bon Air schools. Fraud was perpetrated with the claim of community support for the sale of the building to a developer. Abuse is occurring due to the threat of block busting and intentional infliction of distress. Why won't Michael Lamb advocate for we, the people who have been harmed by this detrimental building? Who does he serve? It is no wonder that issues with the school district persist. Checks and balances don't exist when the same person is the comptroller for the city and Pittsburgh Public Schools. Is that a conflict of interest? When the same person moves on to work for the county, they would still be overseeing county property. Here's the situation. One, an excellent school is closed. Two, the building has become a threat and detrimental harm. Three, it should be condemned and sold to the city for a dollar. Four, it must be torn down. Five, parks and trees Pittsburgh funds use to make it a green space. Six, the residents of Bon Air care for it as volunteers. Why are we paying taxes for continued detriment? Why should we pay taxes for a detriment? The Pittsburgh Public Schools Administration has offended our sensibility. We are being harmed by this rogue school board. We have paid mortgages, taxes, voted, attended community meetings expressing our outrage and concern. The Board of Education has not even sent a single official representative to our meetings about the derelict school building. Michael J. Mullen reflection. Retired deputy fire chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Michael James Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Poma Chakman-Yahelihi.
In lakaka lakaka in Grand Rising, everyone. My title is Poma Chakman-Yahelihi. I'm gonna read a little bit from the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, which to adopt the following draft, the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, "The United States remains committed to addressing the urgent issues of concern to indigenous peoples across the Americas, including combating societal discrimination against indigenous peoples." And then the preamble states, "The member states of the Organization of America states here and after the states of which the United States of America is a member, that recognizes the rights of indigenous peoples are both essential and historical significance to the present and future of the Americas. The important presence in the Americas of indigenous people and our immense contribution to development, plurality, and cultural diversity, and reiterating our commitment to our economic and social well-being, as well as the obligation to respect our rights and our cultural identity, and that the existence of the indigenous cultures and peoples of the Americas is important to humanity." So they reaffirm that our people are an original diverse society with our own identity that constitutes an integral part of the Americas, and they are concerned that our people have suffered from historic injustices as a result of interalia, colonization, dispossession of our lands, territories, and resources, thus preventing us from exercising in particular our right to develop in accordance with our own needs and interests. And they also recognize the urgent need to respect and promote the inherent rights of our people, which derive from our political, economic, social structures and from our cultural, spiritual traditions, histories, and philosophies, especially our rights to our lands, territories, and resources. And they also recognize that the respect and for our indigenous knowledge, cultures, and traditional practices contributes to sustainable and equitable development and proper management of the environment. It is important when legislation comes before you that you take these things into consideration and deeply in your mind, for you are also servants of the United States of America, and you're also to work diligently with restoration and repairing of indigenous peoples throughout the Americas. I yield.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Andre Dietrich.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm from the Beachview area. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh. I traveled back and forth to Tampa, Florida. I designed a math program where I use math to, I use math and sports to help kids understand math, and I noticed in the Beachview area, there is probably no activities, physical activities for the kids, no sports. And when that happens, you know, kids start to use their energy in other ways, and sometimes it's not a good way. So what I do is I take sports and I develop and I show math equations, and I'd sure like to see if at Alton Field, we couldn't get the kids started back to athletics, back into sports, and we could also use that to help them with their education. That's all. That's what I wanted to tell the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last registered speaker is Atonti Kuingchua.
Please come forward. Restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes. My title is Atonti Kuingchua, and I'm an Aboriginal of America. I was raised or brought up in this area now known as the city of Pittsburgh, once known as the Delaware Territory. In lakaka lakaka in Grand Rising to you all, my title is Atonti Kuingchua, Firekeeper Pro Tempo of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. As outlined in section four, Article twenty-two of the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People pertaining to my people, it states and reiterates that Aboriginal and indigenous people have the indisputable inherent right by pedigree of our ancestors to promote, develop, and maintain our nation-states and infrastructures in harmony with the great law of peace which framed the Constitution of the United States, in harmony with the Constitution of our nation-states. It is acknowledged and reaffirmed in Senate Congress seven-sixth of nineteen-eighty-seven and House Congress Resolution three-thirty-one of nineteen-eighty-eight, which both express the United States' trust, responsibility, and obligation to Aboriginal American people from the first treaty entered into called the Delaware Treaty. With our people's government-to-government relationship echoing throughout history, with such proof, evidences, and apologies such as House Joint Resolution three of two thousand and seven, how can our culture and heritage, our status, as described in Article one, Section two, Clause three, and excluding Indians not taxed, be marginalized or ignored in an area of equal opportunity? How can we, the American Aboriginal people, be zealously marginalized continuously? The pain I see my people bear when they are oppressed and deprived of their inherent rights in the cold as it is wintertime, hungry when we are also deprived of our resources which are ours, seeing the fear in children's eyes which was once where once joy was, saddens me. It is important and is the utmost, it is of the utmost importance that this legislation, the implementation of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People and the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People should be implemented, setting a foundation that we together can move forward in equity, honorable, and coexisting. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak? Please come forward at this time.
Good morning. My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at Seventh Fifteen Mercer Street up in the Hill District. First, I wanted to start with youth council. You know when we had the food trucks, the owners of the food truck that came here, and I was talking about Shop and Save and the rotten fruit, rotten fruit and vegetables. As I left, she went out behind me, owner of the truck. And if you listen, I wish you would come down and tell him, because she said, "Ms. Brown, you are right. I bought a green pepper to cook." She said she took it home and she picked it up and it's all rotten down the bottom. She said, "I brought it back," and she said, "Ms. Brown, you tell them to come up and shop." And you know, I asked you to come shop at the Shop and Save, but you didn't. I asked you to come up to your, the whole group to come up to our, Katie Wirervis, you didn't. But Mr. Coghill did, and you know what? Them old Cougars almost had him. You should have been there. Because I'm serious, when I heard them say, she said, "Well, what are you?" He said, "Italian." She said, "I'd like Italian." She told him how good he was. And then there was one in a wheelchair. They said, she seen him and said, she rolling down the hill. Uh, who is he? He's cute. So I'm telling you, if he comes back again, I want you up there with him, because you might have to fight some of them off, because they really thought he was so nice looking. Okay, now, I'm going to tell you, I'm laughing. I want you to laugh, because I want you to understand that I haven't given him H E L, H E L L in here, but he still came. He wasn't afraid to come up in our neighborhood and face them old people. And you know what? I thank you for the respect you gave, because you know what? They have forgotten us up there. I have not been able to tell you anything about when I went to sign up for the P R T for telling them that we don't have a bus. I went to sign up and I told them where I live. He pulled it up on the screen, Katie Wirervis, and Katie Wirervises. He had two master's degrees. He was our assistant thing, he's Assistant District Attorney. He started the, oh, the college, community college, which I went to and transferred on to Carlow. He started that. He started the Human Relations Commission. And the old politicians, when I went over there to county council, when my, when Mr. Watson, they said, "Will you call, will you call the bus?" I will not. Nobody can come down here and with a hidden agenda. I heard one, I couldn't figure out who it was. I didn't see him, but I heard one of them say, "Wait a minute, there's twelve." I thought he said fifteen, but I know there's twelve of them. He said, "He cannot do something like that." Okay, that's the older one. Then it was a young one. You know, he's new. Okay, I'm going to honor him. We got to honor him, but I'm telling you, it's up, my time is up, but don't come back up without them.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak?
[laughing]
Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Verden. I'm from Beachview, and gentleman spoke earlier, Mr. Dietrich. It's family, and he is a retired engineer and a sports, oh gosh, the words are leaving my mind. Anyway, he has this amazing program that he puts these math problems out on a field, and kids who were struggling in science and math, they're given these problems to solve by running on this field and moving things around on these markers that are all printed off for math. It's an amazing program. It's known as Kids in Kiss Math. You can find it on Facebook. I sent him the, this could, this could happen in a lot of communities. These are kids in Tampa that had no will. Like, he had, he had a video the other day, and he yelled out to the kids. He said, "Who likes numbers? Who needs numbers?" And they screamed, "We need numbers!" How many times do we hear kids, even in our generation, okay, I'm older than you, he would say, "What do I need math for? What do I need science for?" He's getting through to these kids. Last night, I was shaking my finger at him. I said, "You out all night?" He says, "No," he says, "I've got kids. They're crunching. They're trying to pass their test. He will sit up personally." Now, I mean, granted, he's a snowbird. He goes back and forth from Tampa to Beachview, but he knows who he can train. He's, we need this. This is something Pittsburgh has never seen. So please give him a look. Excellent article, Ms. Warwick, on the RCOs. They quoted you. I'm just going by the issues with the RCOs. It's a hot mess. And yes, the developers, if you're not on their side, they try to squeeze out the other, oh gosh, the others. But your article's all right.
Thank you. Any further speakers wishing to speak? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that'll take us to our Standing Committee agenda. The first committee is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill fifteen-oh-three.
Bill fifteen-oh-three, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Sable and Sable LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for expert legal services in connection with a certain case.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill fourteen-seventy-six.
Bill fourteen-seventy-six, Resolution amending, Resolution number seven-fourteen of two thousand and twenty-one, effective October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, entitled, "Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with agencies to provide emergency shelter services, street outreach services, rental assistance, and housing relocation and stabilization services, and/or data collection activities as associated with the two thousand and twenty-one Emergency Solutions Grant funds at a cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars, so as to decrease Allegheny County Housing Authority and Three Rivers Community, Inc., by twenty-five thousand dollars, decrease neighborhood legal services by twenty-five thousand dollars, and increase Arborley by fifty thousand dollars."
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah. Kelly, are you the one that can speak to this?
Yes, sir.
Just every time this comes up, well, if you can introduce yourself.
Kelly Russell, Assistant Director for Community Development.
Every time the Emergency Solutions Grants come up, I'm always interested to see all that.
Is it from two thousand and twenty-one? Yeah, if you could just give us a quick, if you could just give us a quick overview of, again, what the two thousand and twenty-one Emergency Solutions Grant is for?
It's usually for, there are five eligible components for E S G funding: shelter, street outreach, homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, and H M I S data collection. With these funds, with all the extra COVID money we had, N L S A Neighborhood Legal Services, and also Three Rivers Community Services, who does our inspections, were able to use those funds, because they were able to, well, excuse me, breathe. For the case of T R C I, Three Rivers Community Inspections, they were able to use their COVID funds for inspections. So we have two years to spend this money. In the case for Neighborhood Legal Services, they weren't able to use those funds at all. So what we're doing is moving these funds and giving them to Arborley, who can spend the funds in the two-year limit that we have.
Okay. And what type of service will Arborley?
Arborley does the homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. So what that is, is in case of those who are in case of losing, in case possible about to lose housing. So rapid rehousing can help house people who are potentially about to be evicted, and homelessness prevention can also help with any type of arrears, payments that people have as well.
Do you have information on how they help them? Do they give them money for next year, next month's rent?
Yes. Yeah, it covers rental, rent. It can cover, as I said, any type of arrears. It could cover, well, arrears is, you know, utility payments, things like that, back rent and forward, back rent up to six months and forward rent for up to two years.
And how successful is that, once they help them?
They're able to help sustain their housing, so it is very successful.
I mean, then do they get employment so they can keep paying?
Well, it's not, they do have wraparound services as well, but the thing is to at least prevent the person from losing their housing.
Yeah, I'm just saying, after the six months, do we have information on what happens after, after that time?
I can get that for you if you would like.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, because do they then, you know, then do they lose housing or?
No, no. The goal is to keep the housing. It's a person has a, let's just say, hit a hardship, and it's to keep-
So there's not a cap on how long they can help them?
Well, it's the two years.
Two years.
Two years. Sorry if you said that.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah. Okay. And so this will all be for that type of-
Yes, sir.
-payments? Is that what rapid rehousing is?
Yes. It's a combination, rapid housing and homelessness prevention. It's two services in one.
Okay, so rapid rehousing is just payment to the existing places they're already at?
Correct, yes, sir.
It's not like they're rapidly getting them into another place.
They could also, it could be either or. It could either be at the existing house or we could be moving them to a new housing as well.
Okay. And then this is a million to?
No, it's not a million.
No, I know. I'm just saying, the overall, you know, E S G grants that we get, this is one point two from two thousand and twenty-one.
Correct, yes, sir.
And how much do we get every year?
It varies. It's normally around one point two. Some years it could be one point one, but it also depends upon federal funding as well, so.
And why do we get it?
That's part of our four allocation fundings. We get the C D B G funds, we get Emergency Solutions, we get HOPE, Housing Opportunity Persons with AIDS, and then you also get the Home Funds that we bypass to the U R A.
Do you know how much E S G grants the county gets?
It's roughly around the same, because we do administer the program jointly.
Okay, so you administer program jointly with them?
Yes, we put our applications together. We work in regards, there's certain organizations that are solely funded by the county, and there's certain organizations that are solely funded by the city.
Okay. And then the additional money, are you familiar with the additional money that the county receives to solve issues relating to homelessness? For some reason, I thought that was, they got an increased amount of E S G, but you're saying they get the same amount?
It's roughly, one of us could be either or around the same, but-
So this isn't HUD money?
Yes, it is HUD money.
This is HUD money.
This is HUD money.
So then HUD money is another pot of money that they give the county for-
Oh, you're talking about the C O C funds. Yeah, those are two separate fundings.
Yeah.
And the other thing just would also-
Why are they two separate fundings? Do you know?
Well, the C O C, that's, goes strictly to the county, whereas E S G, and I was about to explain this, E S G used to be handled by Allegheny, Allegheny County Economic Development up until last year, when that was merged with Department of Human Services. So.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just trying to understand why, you know, why they're two separate, like, why isn't it just all C O C money? And why doesn't the county just get all that?
That's a HUD question. I can't answer that question. We just, we receive the E S G funds, just like, well, now I can say D H S receives a separate-
Yeah, that's just interesting, because we, you know, the C O C money, as you know, I think it's-
It's a lot more.
Thirty million, like twenty, thirty million.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then we receive a million, but then the county receives this. It's just, but the whole goal is to solve issues related to, this is more upstream, prevent someone from losing housing, but yeah, anyway, just not, not an expert in all these grants, but I figured, you know, that's why I brought you to the table, so thank you.
No problem.
And then, just, you know, in the light of yesterday's, you know, announcement press conference, just to continue this conversation of how we're going to continue to work with the county to leverage those funds. So thanks.
No problem.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Similarly, that was a clear explanation. Thank you. I appreciate that. I was quickly writing down the five uses, and I missed the fifth one.
H M I S?
H M I S, Homeless Management Information Services. It's a data collection warehouse.
The data. That's great. That's great. I appreciate that. I, and I'm supportive, of course, of the emergency services grants going to both the stabilization services and the housing relocation. I think the, they're both important, but the stabilization services are what we're trying to get to, right? Keeping people in their homes. And it's very often that I'm seeing that rents are dramatically increasing, and that's one of the reasons. I'm working with a constituent now whose rent is nearly doubled and has been on a waiting list for the housing, the vouchers at the housing authority, and thought she'd finally gotten to the top of the list. Somehow got ghosted by the housing authority, and we're trying to get everybody to talk to each other so she can actually get another apartment that's affordable. But in the meanwhile, we're trying to get her the help to make the increase in rent, so she's just now on the street. But I had also really hoped that the Neighborhood Legal Services work would be, was that for like the lawyer of the day? Can you explain that a little bit more? Because we've, we've done several pots of money, including ARPA money, into like the U R A that's going, I thought, to the same end user to provide legal services for tenants. And I think, I think I caught it, what you were saying, but I just want to hear it one more directly. Is it because they're using the ARPA funds in place of these, and it's loosened up these funds?
It wasn't ARPA.
Okay.
I had mentioned the COVID funds.
Okay.
All right. But they weren't able to use the funds. So what we were able, we still have the two-year limit to spend this funding.
Okay, okay.
Because they couldn't use the funding, we wanted to give the funding to the organization that could spend the funds.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's better to have the money out on the street where the needs are right now, but can we follow up afterward and figure out why they weren't able to use those funds? Because I also think that providing legal services to tenants is another part of the problem, because sometimes it isn't just about the extra cash. That landlord is not going to take that cash, and maybe they're doing something that actually a lawyer could help stabilize the tenant. And so, yeah, I think both, both kinds of programs are important, so. But I appreciate the explanation. Thank you. That's all. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Bill fourteen-seventy-seven.
Bill fourteen-seventy-seven, Resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the National League of Cities in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the annual membership dues in the National League of Cities.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
I do, please.
Discussion, Councilman-
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so we have, is this an annual fee to be part of the National League of Cities? And I'm just curious as to what benefits we get from that? What exactly is the benefit of being part of the National League of, hi. Just please introduce yourself.
I'm Lanay Lincoln. I'm the Assistant Director for Operating and Special Revenue.
Lanay?
Lanay.
Lanay, okay, Lanay.
So the National League of Cities, they have four major platforms. They have the Center for Municipal Practice, which brings together like research, education, and analysis of best practice across major metropolitan areas in the country. There's a Center for Leadership and Education that is there to help improve children and families, and research related to that, and best practice is there. And they have a program that's called REAL, which helps deal with racial disparities and how to, how other cities are dealing with racial disparities and how to develop good plans in your area. And they also have a risk consortium for like insurance purposes and pulling together resources and how other, you know, what, what type of risk platforms are out there. So those are their four major platforms.
Well, they sound great. I guess my question is, do we have a liaison from the city of Pittsburgh that actually goes and-
That is something I would have to get back to you on. They, I know that they have conferences and stuff, stuff like that.
Yeah, right, right, right.
I haven't been here a full year yet to see the cycle of how things go.
No, I get it, I get it. It's, uh, yeah, I'm just curious as to like, with, how we benefit from it, that's all. And do we have a liaison?
Likely to be someone from the mayor's staff.
Sounds like very worthwhile programs, I just don't know, do we utilize them, that's all? And who?
I can get back to you with an answer.
Who's our representative that, you know? Okay, Lanay, um, you know, yeah, whatever, if you can get back to me on how we benefit, and do we actually have a liaison that goes to a conference or summit of some sort, that's what I'm curious about, so. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may not be able to answer this, but we can get the question. I read a lot of National League of Cities stuff, of course, you know, I love to do research, right? I, you know, right? And so, does this membership cover all of council members?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I probably haven't just figured out what code I need, or something like that to, unlock, or maybe it's the reason I'm able to download things or get things, so, we'll just make sure that we've been in the loop. I've never been to a conference, has anyone else here been to a National League of Cities conference? When it was here, that's true, I forgot.
It was 2016, I believe.
Yeah, that's true. I think I actually organized a tour in the Strip District for them, so I forgot about that. So aside from that one, but I've never traveled to one, so, and I, I don't have anything that I've got in mind, but I do appreciate their, their research, and it's definitely informed. I think I've got something in front of my staff right now to read about short-term rentals or something like that, so I do find them valuable. And I, I certainly don't mind a membership of this size, you know, just under 18,000 for the benefit we get. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to answer Councilman Cross's question, I believe as a councilperson, we're all automatically, it does cover both the administration and us, so we're all sort of the liaison to the organization. And I also read it for legislative briefings and things of that nature.
Nice. Yeah, any material you could give for Councilwoman Gross would be great, we'd appreciate it. Let her read it, and then she'll fill me in, you know, so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1478.
Bill 1478, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of David M. Casper in the Amount of $12,500 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to His Property at 1447 Warner Street from Adjacent City-Owned Property at 1449 Warner Street on or About, February 6, 2023.
Motion to approve? Approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1483.
Bill 1483, Resolution Transferring a Total of $3,444 Within the 2023 Operating Budget from City Council to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services.
Your approval.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to invoices, need a motion to approve the invoices?
Motion to move. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved, need a motion to approve the P-cards. Motion to move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure. Councilwoman Wilson?
If you, if you don't mind, there, there is an, I mean, I'm not sure I'm looking at the same thing, but I don't see any, I don't see any fees on the P-card.
We, we did have P-cards for approval, I know I've.
Yeah, yeah, but there's no.
I viewed them earlier this week.
There's no, um, there's no number, there's not any numbers.
I'll, I'll get them for you. Yeah, we had them.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
I looked at them earlier this week. I'll forward them to all the council. Um, so that takes us to Public Works Infrastructure Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have our first new paper is Bill 1472.
Bill 1472, Resolution Granting a Vacation of an Unopened Portion of Melmore Way, Laid Out in the Shakespeare Street Associates Plan of Lots Number Two, Recorded in Planbook Volume 130, Page 33, Seventh Ward, Eighth Council District.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1475.
Bill 1475, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with CSXT for Preliminary Engineering Work on the Boundary Street Corridor Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements, and Providing for the Payment of the Cost thereof not to exceed $17,215.
Your approval, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, just brief, so this is, if, if anyone knows, when you walk from Central Catholic CMU area to Panther Hollow, right now, everyone just kind of walks in the street with the cars, it's dangerous. There is a path, it's a dirt path, it runs next to the railroad, and my understanding is that this project is to make that a little nicer, so it's, you know, so you're not kind of walking in the dirt and mud, and hopefully get pedestrians to use that instead of walking in the street.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Burgess. One new paper, Bill 1471.
Bill 1471, Resolution Amending Resolution 246 of 2023, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Commission on Human Relations to enter into an agreement with King 360 for technical support and development for its customer service portal by including ongoing technical support and maintenance, and increasing the term and authorize not to exceed amount by $27,240.75 for total cost not to exceed $53,940.75.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1178.
Bill 1178, Ortonance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article 5, Section 925.06, Setbacks to Update the Standards for Certain HVAC Equipment and Setbacks.
Motion to approve?
Second, with discussion.
With discussion, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. I'm pleased to see this finally at the point where we can take a preliminary vote on this bill after Planning Commission hearings, a public hearing, and, and having it been introduced in council. The, the quick version of this is, it will make replacement or installation of a new HVAC or a replacement HVAC unit in a residential dwelling a lot easier. You will no longer have to post for 21 days, you will no longer have to alert your neighbors, you won't have to go through a hearing, with some exceptions. You know, as long as you're within the setback, the existing, your house or the HVAC unit is in, within the existing setback, it's in the side or the rear of the property, or if it's in the front, it still needs to be shade, you know, screened and shaded, it's, it's just a lot easier. So if you run into an emergency situation, you have to replace your, your air conditioning unit, you don't have to jump through so many hoops. That's the whole purpose of this, so. I appreciate council support.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
I just want to say thank you for getting this done before the summer. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Thanks.
I mean, I do get several emails about, you know, some of those, you know, complaints about what are they supposed to do, so, it is very helpful. Like, it's one of those bills, one of those bills that you see, and where you're changing the code, that just makes sense, so, thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Our new paper is Bill 1482.
Bill 1482, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816 of 2015, Effective December 18th, 2015, as amended, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and a 2016 Community Development Block Grant Program, and a 2016 through 2021 Capital Improvement Program, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from Habitat for Humanity minus $2,093.86 to Polish Hill Civic Association by adding $2,093.86 and authorizing a subsequent agreement or agreements.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Schlossberger. Our first new paper is Bill 1479.
Bill 1479, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Starfire Corporation for the display of a fireworks show in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $80,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1480.
Bill 1480, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements for performance and entertainment services in conjunction with the City of Pittsburgh's Independence Day Festival at an amount not to exceed $17,500.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee, which is Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilman Warwick. We have one paper, Bill 1481.
Bill 1481, Resolution Amending Resolution 575 of 2022, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with Monday.com, an online project management and portfolio management tool for use with multiple city departments by increasing the cost by $68,000.
Uh, motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Yeah, so Monday, Monday.com is a, it's a, like, a task management tool, they use it a lot in DOMI, they use it a lot in IMP, we use it in our office, pretty handy, so if you just have ongoing tasks, you can put them in there, and then if someone goes on vacation, you can reassign them, it's, yeah, it's just basically a task management tool, it's handy.
Thank you.
Are we gonna have any trainings on it?
Oh, I can ask, yeah.
I'm really excited about this. Do we have a guest? Get, come on up.
You didn't waste your time, see?
Yeah, I, um.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Andrew Hayhurst, I'm, I manage the Project Management Office in Innovation and Performance, and I've been administering, administering Monday.com for IMP for, I think, since 2018. We have 250 people that are using it now. This is to add 50 new licenses, which we would be happy to share with council, and.
I think you might need 50 just for council, honestly. There's 50 of us over here.
And we might be coming back.
Yeah. Can we sign up on, sign up right now, and then we take all 50?
Yeah, I mean, I can, my takeaway from here, I can email you all and schedule a demo session. We just did this with Councilmember Kraus's office, walked through what his team has already created, and helped kind of, we're trying to help him optimize what, what they're doing with his team. But we can do a demo just to show you guys how others are using it, and how IMP is using it, and then get you on it. Be happy to.
And also, my understanding is, we have not done this yet, but, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can also, so for example, DOMI uses it a lot, so if you have tasks with DOMI, they can, like.
Absolutely.
You can use the same.
You can track your tasks and not have to annoy them with a million emails. That's the, the idea.
So, um, in IMP, we're managing several enterprise-wide projects, there's roughly like, 20, and we have all the different departments that are working on those projects on it, and they can just add updates directly into the, the task. Um, and it's, I mean, it's ultimately a collaboration tool, and we love it.
I don't know who really has the floor here, I just keep jumping in.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I don't have any other.
It's never stopped you before.
So we have been asking and trying to get, working with city clerks, I've, it feels like for years, and council presidents, to do kind of constituent or like, customer relationship management stuff. We work off of spreadsheets, unfortunately, right? We've tried databases, they were kind of stupidly expensive to do, it's a single license, so then we would drop them, we, sometimes we have better programming in our spreadsheets than others, we have dropdown lists and things like that, but now, I think I've got five different sets, and so you have to keep going back to like, well, I need to go back to 2020s, and now I have to open a different sheet. And so, it, does Monday.com have a kind of module or functionality like a customer relationship management tool?
It, it is not a CRM tool. You can create boards that act in, and do those things. Councilmember Kraus has two boards that are for call logs, so they track everybody that calls, and it helps them with the task flow of making sure they respond and how they respond.
But then there's not a separate table of keeping track of who the person is and their address and phone number, that kind of thing.
Definitely not. And so, the, the one thing I will say is, a, a different effort that IMP is working on with the mayor's office is, we're gonna do an RFP to replace 311 and like, the Qsend, and that RFP is supposed to be released in the next month. So the expectation is that next, early next year, we will have a new CRM system.
So we already authorized that RFP?
No.
We didn't authorize, we don't authorize.
You don't authorize.
I, I, I keep intending to amend the code about that, but so, um, we can just, we would have to nicely ask that council side be included in the scope?